I want to thank all of you for coming to our quarterly department head meeting. And I want to thank you specifically for the fantastic reports that you generate. For people that are listening, these are available on the website. And they provide all of the information that the departments are doing for the quarter. So this, for you to join us today, as you know, this is to give us any updates or address any questions that we have. But we do have some department heads that are not able to make it today. And we do have some board of selectmen members that had emergencies. But they did go through and submit questions, which some of you, if they were lengthy, I gave you in advance. But again, I thank you for the quarterly reports because they clearly are very important. So we're going to start with the assessors office. Antonia Micky? Thank you.
Good morning, my -- this quarterly report's probably the most extensive one of the year. We do sign the grant list once a year. This is inclusive of the pages of the M-13 form that I give our finance director at the end of January. It includes the reconciliation of the total list, including of the top real estate, personal property, motor vehicle taxpayers on this report. The highlight is on the second page where I give compliment to the works of the town clerk, building department, the town planner, and the tax collector. We had an increase last year of sales that was, in my mind, unprecedented. We went from 450 sales to 621 transfers in concert with building permits of 525 on an average to over 750 permits. And with the OpenGov software, it allowed us to maintain those with existing support staff to be ahead of schedule. So I wanted to make that as a highlight of my report. Welcome any other questions.
Board, any questions?
No, thank you for all your work because this is quite a time. Thank you.
Tony, I do have one question. Has the grant list been finalized?
Yes.
It has?
That's part of this report. You'll see the bottom line differences in the memo that I sent to Jen.
Okay.
Shows what the before grant list was in the after figures.
Okay.
So that was all done in February.
Okay.
Okay.
You know what? I have one other question, and that is, it says to continue to cross-reference the MLS with our existing records. How do you do that?
We have access to the multiple listing service. We, in concert, when we see anything that is an exception to what we have on our existing file, we will contact the brokers, buyer's seller side, really just monitoring the sales activity that's going on, but getting into the detail of features of each home, making sure the integrity of our card on that record matches what the MLS data is.
Okay.
Quite helpful.
Okay.
Just one question, and this is a million dollar question. Do you continue to see the grant list going up in the future?
We have, yeah.
You do?
Yeah, we had just one of the reval years where it slowed down a little bit. But yeah, it's a lot of growth continuing, especially with federal, the Baywater Project federal and with the Palmer projects going on.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tony.
Okay.
Okay. We, Joe is not here. Do we have anybody for, we don't, right?
No.
Okay. So we are going to go on to emergency management with Mark McEwen.
Good morning, everybody. I don't have anything further to add, but I would like to draw attention to the fact that the award has been finally given for 27 Cremins Road and that we expect to take ownership over, probably over the next month or so. And once that's done, the property, buildings will be demolished and brought back to its natural state, and is required to do so in 90 days. So the bids are already out for the demolition work. Any questions?
Thank you. There was a three month from the time that you could acquire Cremins in order to demolish and get it back to?
So we did it on the federal level as part of the application. Now we have to do it on the local level.
Okay.
But we have not applied for the actual permit yet to demo.
Okay.
We haven't even awarded the bid, so. Ownership is the first priority right now, taking ownership, which is in the works.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Next, we have Jen Trineski for the finance department.
Good morning. I have nothing to add to my report, but I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
I did have one question, Kate, and that, or Jen, and that is, how do you feel Open Gov is going for the whole process?
For the budget process, I think it works really well. I think that one of the big benefits is it's a one-stop repository for the department requests and any additional backup, anything like that, where the department, Kate and I can see and share files. I think in that regard, it's great. I think it's very useful for Kate in her analysis and preparing the budget that comes to the board of selectmen. And I think it's been very useful for the board of selectmen reviews, being able to put it up on the screen, letting people see the detail. It has a lot of other reporting capabilities that I don't think we are fully utilizing just because I always put it on my to-do list and it gets bumped down because other priorities crap up. But I think there's a lot of potential there for using it as a communication tool to the public. We did a lot of enhancements on how we put the budget information out there, but I think we need to communicate more to the public that it's out there, encourage them to go out and take a look at it. And I think with our public relations person now, who really knows how to communicate in a way that the public will latch on to, I think we can do more with that.
Were you able to monitor how many residents access the site?
You can see how many hits the site gets over set time periods, seven days prior, 30 days prior, 90 days prior. And when we have put the budget out there and said, you know, at a board of selectmen meeting, budget's out there, we can see that the numbers go up. You can't tell if it's all Darien residents. You can tell if they're originating from Darien or from somewhere else. But you can't tell much more about who is actually accessing it. So the numbers were higher this year, but they are, they are low. A lot of people don't access the public information. But I think there's a lot of potential to get the word out and have people accessing information.
I think if we get some other stuff out there besides just finances-
Yes.
-that will drive more people to the site, and then they'll explore everything that's out there.
Right. I think, you know, we can do all sorts of things. We could have a section for each department where they can put things out. It's just a matter of finding our internal resources to get that up and running and training departments and giving them the power to do that. But it is very powerful. I think that we can use it a lot more than we do.
I have a question on the invoices paid electronically. So let's see, you're really trying to bump that up, right?
Right.
And there's significant cost savings there.
There is. There's real dollar savings in postage, check stock, that kind of thing. But there's also a lot of time savings, the time that it takes to run the checks, to stuff the checks, to file the checks. I've done a couple of webinars where people have, they've approached it in different ways. Probably the most interesting is there's a town, I think they were in Ohio, they don't write a single check anymore. Everything is processed electronically. It saves time on clearing checks. So I have that kind of as a case study that I want to look at. But we are trying to pay more electronically.
So where you have this cost per invoice process, that includes your savings cost on human resources, right?
Right.
Right? Okay.
Do most vendors accept e-payment, or is that a challenge?
We haven't, that's another approach that some people have taken.
Yeah.
They've sent out letters to all their vendors and said, you know, here's a form if you want to be paid electronically, send it back. We haven't taken that approach. We've taken the approach, if a vendor submits an invoice and it has the electronic payment information on that, we've switched them over to electronic payment. There's other services out there that will go through your entire list of vendors, identify which ones they have an arrangement with to do electronic payments, and then they kind of do all the legwork on getting that set up. So there's a couple of different ways, but it is definitely a goal to pay more electronically.
Do we receive electronically as well?
We receive some.
Yeah.
But not a lot because the departments are the ones who know what should be coming in and for what purpose. And we need them to tell us where to book it on the ledger-
Exactly.
... instead of us seeing it just come into the bank.
Yep.
So it's a bit of a process adjustment.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Jen, the ARPA reporting to the board of finance, will that be in its own separate category, and will you be posting that anywhere?
So the monthly report has multiple sections, general fund, other funds, capital.
It'll go?
I picture it being another page at the end of that, and you guys see that on a quarterly basis. And it'll just be the list of all of our appropriations, the original budget and what we've encumbered or spent to date. And that'll get posted with the board of finance packet every month.
Okay. Okay, those are all my questions. Sarah?
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thanks, Jen. Next, Bobby Bush will be reporting on fire marshal activity.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
Just a note to add, we did have a large structure fire on Thursday afternoon over on Hecor Avenue to start off this quarter. The quarterly report stands as is. I will be happy to answer any questions if anyone may have.
Thank you for all that you do.
Yeah. It's been a very busy quarter, obviously, for you guys, so.
I do have one question. The oil in the stream along Relahan Road, who do we report that to?
It gets reported to DEEP, the hazards materials unit. And they generally don't, you know, come down and follow up on it. It's, in all likelihood, it came off the highway out of one of the catch basins when, after raining, it flushed it out of the catch basin.
And the false alarm fire fund, where do those revenues go? Where do they end up?
They go into a separate revenue account that was created as a result of the ordinance. And it is for use for, for the fire departments, for use for betterment, training, equipment, whatever the needs are.
Okay. So do you know, so it looks like you generate about $31,000 over the last year? Does that sound right?
The overall billing, I mean, the last quarter, we filled out, you know, a little over 12 grand, and our collections are doing pretty good. We, yeah, so, and I don't control their expenses. We're just kind of the clearinghouse. We handle the billing and the collection end of it.
Okay. So there was a question on if there were any changes you would recommend, but?
So there was, there was a change made to the billing process almost two years ago. We used to be $100 no matter how many times, and the board of selectmen changed it to 100, 150 for the second one, and 250 for the third and beyond within a 365-day period. So, which, if you notice, there's a big, you can see the spike in dollars billed between fiscal, if you look at fiscal '20, '21, you know, difference of 11 invoices, but a difference of $5,000 in billing.
That's why. Okay.
In regards to volunteers, how are you doing? Or do you have a steady stream of new volunteers coming in? Do you have a lot of retirees? Are you seeing a shortage?
So they are completely separate from us.
Okay.
But I will, as an active volunteer, I will tell you, the three departments are doing pretty well.
Okay.
You know, we're very happy that we have a lot of young members. We have a lot of high school kids that are, that are limited in what they can do, but they have a great deal of interest and they're continuing on. You know, our issue down the road is going to be being able to afford to live in this area. Once they graduate college, get their first job, and move out of the house, it's difficult for them to remain around here. And so you see a drop off. We're not going to see the traditional firefighter who stayed active for 20-plus years.
Yeah.
You know, we're hoping that we can keep guys in the, like, the seven-to-10-year range.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Next is David Knopf, the director for the health department.
Just want to let the world know that the quarterly report that I've submitted to the board of selectmen is posted right now on the health department webpage, so for details, anybody can access that information there. There were some questions that were asked of me by the board that I'd like to direct, address. And as we know, I think in watching the news, case counts, positive cases of COVID are continuing to increase. We've seen three weeks in a row of increases. We will have an updated weekly report posted today and submit that and circulate that today, so we'll see what's happened in this past week. The good news is that through our interviews, we find that the cases that are positive are mostly mild, cold-like symptoms, some with fevers. We're not seeing any hospitalizations this time around. And it's being attributed to the fact that really the low impact, even though there's high numbers this time around, is in part due to the large number of vaccinations that people have gotten. The push is that vaccines will prevent severe illness, and it does seem to be that that's the case. There's some concern about the latest variant that has been raised, the Xe variant. And as of last Wednesday, the Department of Public Health says that it hasn't been found in Connecticut, but not every positive case is tested for all the variants. So the assumption is that it is here. So, but again, it is being considered to be not as, as strong, or not as, it doesn't have the strong health, negative health impacts as previous rounds of COVID. And local data for variants isn't provided by town, it's just an aggregate by state. So we would have no way of knowing if in Darien, there's a higher number of variants here than anywhere else, because it's a random sampling of the test results that they, that the state will check for what variants are being found. Another question was asked about reinstituting the mask mandate here, either in town hall or just recommending it in general. And again, I think that what we should look at are hospitalizations and, you know, not necessarily just case numbers. If, if this isn't a serious illness, and, you know, I just don't see the reason to mask. And if we ended up that, you know, we're unable to staff town hall adequately, then I think we would have that conversation about whether we should reinstitute a mask mandate if people are being quarantined, because the quarantine recommendations are still there. And of course, again, masking, if we started seeing severity of cases increase and people started being hospitalized and we ended up back where we were two years ago, we might look at that again. With respect, we have two test locations in town, just that do only testing. I don't see and haven't heard any chan, any proposals to cut back on those hours at this time. And, you know, we're pleased to hear that. And there's also the newer opportunity for the, what they call, test and treat, where a person, if they start feeling that they may have symptoms, fever or the other number of symptoms of COVID, you can go and get tested and actually get medication at the same time, or get a prescription and get the medication. CVS in town offers that. And we also have on our website locations where that service is available, and there's quite a few of them in the immediate area. Grebes will be getting that. I talked to the pharmacist there last week, and they've been contacted by the state to offer that service as well. So test and get treated right away. And the quicker after you get the symptoms, that you get medication, apparently the more effective the medication is. And, you know, with respect to the case counts getting higher, that's the reported cases. That doesn't count the cases from at-home test kits. We have no idea of what the results are from those tests. So we can only assume that whatever we're seeing for the reported case numbers, that the actual numbers are higher. But again, noting that hospitalization rates are not increasing, overall, it's good news in the COVID front. And with that, I'll take any further questions?
I have two questions. Are you seeing reinfection rates?
We're not able to measure the reinfection rate, but there are people who are getting it more often, you know, have had it second time. Some have been vaccinated, a couple, you know, had the booster as well. But most people are saying it's, it's a cold, and then, you know, get a sniffle, or they're going somewhere to travel, get tested first, and they find that they're positive. We're not seeing that the second time around, cases are that severe.
Okay. Any in-school transmission at this point?
I'm sorry?
Any in-school transmission that you're seeing? I mean, we've been out of school for a week, so it's hard to-
Yeah, you know, we have, I have regular communication with the superintendent and the director of nursing and the medical advisor at the school. And we're not seeing, you know, large in-school transmission, classroom, you know, being, being quarantined. No, we're not really seeing that. Didn't seem like the, we're all concerned about when the masks went away.
Yeah.
What would happen in school? And it didn't seem like there was any real big, you know, reaction to that. The numbers, if you look at the charts, and the charts will be out today, it's broken down by age groups, the numbers haven't shown a big spike.
But we're not contact tracing anymore.
Pardon me?
We're not contact tracing anymore.
Well, what we're doing is we're, we really hadn't contact traced in a long time.
Okay.
So what we're doing is we're really following up on positive cases.
Got it.
Talking to people directly.
Yep.
But as far as contact tracing, even the state, when we had the big surge in December, it was impossible.
Right. Are the schools doing contact tracing? No?
They are still following up, but as far as contact tracing, this, even CDC and the state said, you know-
Don't focus on that.
-don't do it. You know, it's, it has, the effectiveness of doing that, it just, it's not, it really hasn't panned out.
So we can assume that there's some transmission, but we don't know because we're not following-
Well, you, you could tell because of your absentee rates-
Three kids, the same class, all in COVID.
Right. And your numbers go. I am curious to see after break, because I've heard, you know, anecdotally, for the schools, rather, so I'm curious, but.
It is what it is? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
David, I have a couple other questions. So I see that we have an intern that's going to help with the community health assessment.
Yes.
When was the last time a community health assessment was done?
2017.
It was in 2017. Okay. Okay. And then, tics, as a result of COVID, they were being shipped off. Are we still, are we still going to do that?
Yes.
Or are we going to analyze them in-house?
We never analyzed them in-house. They were always, we were just sort of middlemen.
Okay.
You know, the people would, we took a step out of the process.
Okay.
So people, when they find a tick, they can, they can download the form that we have online, fill it out, and mail it in to the ag station for testing. Way it was before was they would have to come here. So, and then we would submit it because that was what, the way the state wanted it done, be submitted through the health department. But with COVID, that step was eliminated, so it could be a direct submission. But we never did the testing in-house.
And we're not going back to that, adding that step?
No.
This will be the new-
No, it's been working.
This will be the new norm? Okay. Okay. That's all my questions. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. We are, Lori Dunn is not available today, so we're going to move on to human services with Ally Ramstack, our director.
Good morning. Good morning. One question was posed to me about the ARPA funding, if we've started working with a nonprofit or figuring out the process of giving the grants. We have not started that. I'm going to look to Kate and Jen, because they do that annually with nonprofits. As you may know, we have started using some of the ARPA funds. Due to the recent tragedies in town, we were able to facilitate the mental health first aid training, which is for laypeople, anyone in the community, to give them education and skills and how to deal with someone in distress. It filled up the first day, there's 30 spots, now we have two more spots, and that's all being used by ARPA funding for the mental health resources. What else?
If people want to sign up for that, how do they do it?
They can email me now that, now that I'm back, Linda's off the hook. They were emailing Linda and me directly. So, and it's on the town website, on the front page.
And we have two more?
Yep. So we have another one. So the first one's going to be May 19th and 20th, but that one's full. And then the next, it's going to be at post 53. And the next one is June 8th, no, June 5th is a Sunday.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Because some people were saying that they work, and obviously, it's, they can't take off two half-days during the week. So there's a Sunday option, and then there's another June 8th and June 9th option. So there's still some spots in there, and if those fill up, then we'll do another one. It's a wonderful training. It's great. I've done it myself, and it's really good.
Is it 18 and over, or?
No.
No?
We actually have a couple of posties. It's not, some, there's some teenage kids who are going to be doing it.
Okay, good.
And some other adult posties, too. So it's, you know, based on the child and how appropriate it is. But I think certainly high school kids can benefit from it.
Okay.
And we have actually used some of the funding, the emergency assistance funding, now that it's officially available two weeks ago, we've helped three families in town with a little over 2,000 each with back rent. So there are people who, two out of three of them had applied to Unite CT, but that program stopped accepting applications. So now we're seeing the fallout from that. We actually got another call yesterday of another client. So luckily, we have those funds available, so we can try to prevent any evictions.
Thank you for all the questions.
Ally, I have a couple of questions. One is, what happens to the filling in the blanks program during the summer?
We're still going to do it.
You still do it?
Mm-hmm.
So it's a year-round?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Not all the schools, obviously, do it, but yeah, so we, and I'm doing it. We started it last summer, actually.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, I see that this last quarter, we had a pretty sizable jump in support and counseling.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I know there were a lot of things that were happening in town that-
Well, that will be in the next quarter, actually, the recent-
Okay.
-try, because this is only through March 31st. We had a surge of new clients, 27. This is usually our quietest quarter.
Right.
So we had a lot of new clients coming in, asking for financial help and in distress, often for the first time. So I think we're seeing the fallout now of what we've been waiting for, or we're anticipating, not waiting for, but, you know, from COVID and all of the financial distress.
So this isn't just an annual blip in that quarter?
No, it's actually kind of opposite of what we normally experience, so.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ally. Next, we have Jeff Adams for our Director of Information Technology, and we're going to have George.
Yes. I could be Jeff.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you have nothing further to add with the board, if you guys have any questions?
Questions?
No, thanks for that.
George, I have a question.
Sure.
Patching of all computer systems is a top priority. What is patching?
It has to do with all the Windows updates.
Okay.
Making sure that, because there's a lot of viruses that are going around. You know, I mean, we're living in a time that's very difficult, especially with everything that's going on outside. So computers are, I was just trying to prevent computers being more susceptible to any issues.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. Thanks, George.
Thank you. Thank you.
And next, so Jeremy Ginsburg is not here.
He'll be out. Brad can find you.
Oh, okay. Wow, great. Excellent.
I think the report largely speaks for itself. Coming off quite a busy quarter, but funding ourselves, getting into a little bit more of a rhythm with the filling of several staff vacancies in the office. Of course, David Keating retired at the end of last year. We just brought a new zoning enforcement officer online and a new office secretary as well. So that's filled the gap in terms of staff shortages and addressing some of the workload in the office. We also have a number of projects, a number of larger, significant projects that have come to a conclusion or are heading in that direction, including the Parklands Project, Palmer's in the Rothen Heights, the Associated Goddard School, as well as the Guidepost Montessori application on Tokenique Road. And with that said, I'm here to answer any questions for you.
A couple of quick ones. You mentioned for, if someone has a comment from the public that can be submitted via email or hand-delivered to the department for the affordable housing, you know, plan, which is the best email to use for the department? Who should we send comments to?
The email address is noted on the website, but it can, it can also be sent to pzz@derianct.gov.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I was curious, I know there's so much development going on in town. I'm wondering if there's a way on your page that you could kind of give updates, like this project should open this date or whatever. I think everyone's curious when Palmer's is going to start work and it might be helpful for residents to understand kind of the timing for some of these projects.
Mm-hmm.
Some of them are a couple of years out. You know, the Palmer's isn't going to be done for a while, but people can understand, you know, Darien Common should open this date and, you know, that kind of a thing.
Yep. We can certainly talk about ways to.
Yeah.
To approach that and.
Because people are asking, and I'm like, I don't.
Yeah.
Know either, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are they, are these sites, these projects, they all have their own websites? Are they continuously updating them? Do you know?
They largely are. Federal Realty has, has a website. The Corbin District, of course, has a website and strong social media presence throughout, throughout the different channels. The Rothen Heights Shopping Center, to my knowledge, does not have a website. So there's been a few more questions around the specifics of that, given that the site has been in.
Yeah.
Let's call it an undeveloped state over the past several years.
Mars, you have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
And Fred, there's, I took a look at the affordable housing plan that's on your site and you're, you're going by chapter, right?
Correct.
Right. And it's, and it's due the end of June, beginning of July?
It's due the end of June, correct. So all hundred sixty-nine communities are required to submit their affordable housing plans by the end of June. The commission is meeting every three or four weeks, a new chapter that we're working on drafting. The town has hired David Keating as a consultant to help the commission draft that plan and is providing direction to, to the commission and to our office as well. And that has, that's been going well. We're moving in along and are on track to, to get that done by, by the deadline.
There's a lot of information there and you can tell it. It's a work in progress. So it's terrific.
Yep.
Great output of information. Mars, any questions? Okay. Thanks for filling me.
Okay, sure.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. BD?
Hello, good morning. Do you have the reports for Jeremy for the building side?
I have them in my office because I didn't think he was going to be here, but we do have them.
As far as our staffing, we're all set. Actually, Fred came back from maternity leave, so she's, we're up to date on everything right now. And as far as that, Fred, he covered most of it. We've been talking to Narwhal Heights to see if we at least get the buildings taken down. Unfortunately, they have to reapply for all new demolition permits, so they're just going to start the process for that.
How long does that take, Mike?
I think, well, since a lot of stuff's been done already, they've still got some asbestos remediation they have to do, but about thirty days, they have to repost everything. So just the waiting period alone is twenty-one days. So hopefully within, once they get started, within, you know, thirty to sixty days.
So maybe by July or December?
Well, it depends how fast they get the application in.
And will that go a long way towards remediating with?
Keeping people happy?
Yeah.
Well, our phones have been ringing, you know, that's our biggest complaint is, you know, just as way the site looks. They did put some screening up, but we asked them to, but it's not enough. So we'll go from there. Hopefully, we'll talk to them again, see if we can push them along a little faster.
But they've submitted?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. So that's the next step. Okay. Any other questions for Mike?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have Pam Gary, our Director of Park and Rec.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't have a lot to add, but I will highlight on page four that I addressed the fact that we had a outstanding first day of registration of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that we brought in one day. I thought it was pretty astounding in comparison to two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, which were just over fifty thousand dollars. So we've seen a huge, huge increase of people wanting services. So it's been pretty great. I will announce that we've had an extremely busy quarter with retirements. Jeannie Folds retired, Jim Flynn retired. We have Tamara from planning a zoning came down. She took over Jeannie's job. She's doing outstanding. And Sandy Rich filled Jim Flynn's job. He's doing outstanding. And unfortunately, we're losing JB Gore, our Recreation Supervisor, accepted a job in Woodbury as the Parks and Recreation Director. We're extremely happy for her, but it's a big loss to Darien. But, so we'll be busy filling that position as well. And that's all I have to add.
Is there any, with such an increase in, you know, these spring and summer programs, is there any talk of maybe increasing the amount of programs that we're offering?
Oh, we continually.
Okay.
So we continually address what things are working and what things aren't working. And either if something's not working, we'll add something new. So we continually do that year after year. Yeah. So the things that are working, we keep.
Good.
I have a couple of questions, Pam.
Sure.
The security guard company, we changed for the.
Orion, 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 sorry, it's Orion. Protective Services, yes. We've met with them. They seem very professional and we're looking, we're looking forward to working with them.
Okay.
That's a big, big item, so.
Mm-hmm. They were the lowest bidder.
That was the, okay, because I know we were quite happy with our.
We had some, we had some issues.
Okay.
With the, the company, the, the people that were actually working in the guards were great.
Right.
But internally, we spent a lot of time, I, my time, going over the payroll, which was, there were tons of corrections had to be made. And so looking forward to not having that happen.
Okay. Because I, I remember hearing that, that the guards or the security people were very positively accepted by the community. So.
And they were. They were hard workers and that really wasn't, but.
That wasn't the issue?
Yeah, there were definitely some internal issues with the other company.
Okay. Can you tell me on the Baker, I'm just curious, what happens to things like the old backstop? What, what do we do with that? Do we recycle it in some way?
The company hauled that away for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's just part of?
Yeah. It was just easier, yeah.
Okay. I have one last question. We did some tree diapers, thanks to Kate, over at Highland.
She's the one who found out about them.
How are they working out?
They have not used them because that's, it's so much rain.
Okay.
And that they didn't need to, but we plan on, with any new plantings, we will be using them. And they're going to take a look at whether they need them right now for the spring. But again, we've had so much rain.
Right.
So if it gets dry, we have them and we have them for new additional plantings as well.
Okay. So we have inventory?
Yep.
Okay.
They won't go to waste.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Okay. Thanks, Pam. Next, we have Chief Anderson for the Police Department.
Good morning. While I have it in front of mind, I just want to talk about, quick about cybersecurity when, when George is up here. I think it's just incumbent on the town to really keep their finger on the pulse of cybersecurity. The FBI Cyber Division says we can accept, expect an attack coming out of Russia on our critical infrastructure, energy, banking. They also say we have the ability to shut Russia right down on the internet if we have to. But bringing it back locally, a police department in Connecticut did get ransomware about a month ago. Their entire operation was ransomwared. I believe they had to pay the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get their data back. That ship was cheaper than, than trying to do it and be out of business for months on end. So it is a big problem in cybersecurity. And I, you know, speak to Jeff Adams and I speak to our IT people at the Police Department on a regular basis, that we have the protections in place to not have that happen to us. But it is a reality that it might happen. When the FBI is talking about it on Sixty Minutes, you know, it's, it's just not talk that we can expect some kind of ransomware attack or some kind of lockout of our critical, critical infrastructure systems in the United States. Hopefully, it doesn't happen here. But locally, Police Department continues on. We're still in a time of transition. The report indicates that I'm losing some key staff in the civilian ranks coming in the next quarter. We still have positions that we need to fill. We're in the process of filling sworn officer positions and dispatcher positions. By and large, we're doing pretty well all in all, though. That will take any questions the board might have.
I saw that the dispatcher was kind of getting to be a difficult spot to fill. What seems to be the challenge? I mean, you have applicants, you had a couple applicants who came on board, they didn't work out. What seems to be the disconnect?
I think it's a confluence of a few things. When this project was first proposed ten years ago, over ten years ago, I think we believe we had, we would have had a conduit of officers from either the Darien Police Department or possibly other departments looking to retire or transition to a dispatcher role. It's not an easy job and folks coming in quickly find out how, even though we're not a nine-one-one-driven department, where we're getting calls consistently in that dispatch center, it is a regular and ongoing edge-of-your-seat type of job that you have to multitask and you have to be able to turn it on at an instant's notice. The last few candidates that we had through the trial, the training phase, they just didn't have the skill set required to conduct the dispatch position up to an acceptable standard. It's a job, much like a police officer, you can't learn on the fly. The, the downside is too great to make a mistake. You have to be able to hit the ground running. Unfortunately, both of these candidates were refined people. They just could not perform the task.
What type of training needs to go in for these applicants before they even apply?
Well, we, at one time, we were looking for certified dispatchers only at the beginning. We didn't get enough pool from that applicant pool. It's something that can be taught if you have the basic skill to do it. It's, you have to be able, multitasking is the main thing you have to be able to do. You have to be able to get the information quickly and get it out to the units in the field quickly while multiple things are happening. And in our training system, we can see if these folks are going to be able to make it once we cut them loose and they, and they fly on their own. Again, like I said, there, there's too much downside to put somebody there to have them fully, you know, on their own and not be able to perform the job. We're still looking and we do have some quality dispatchers. We've had some quality dispatchers leave for better opportunities. We're, we're at the time, we're, it's just not law enforcement is having trouble filling positions. It's every job. Now, when you have a job that's twenty-four seven, where you're going to be working holidays, you're going to be subject to call back and mandatory overtime, and you're working wet nights and weekends, it's, it's not as appetizing as other careers right now. So that's, we're kind of in that boat as well. One of the main things that we have, that we hear from some applicants, we would consider coming down and working in Darien because the, the pay scale and the benefits are comprehensive, the high-end scale for the dispatch position. But getting here is the problem.
Traffic.
They don't want to drive from Bethel. They don't want to drive from New Fairfield. They don't want to drive from South Perry. I, I get it, especially with gas at four dollars a gallon, that, you know, they, they don't want a ninety-minute commute to come work here. I think that's a big part of why we're not getting more applicants from around the state. It's where we're positioned geographically.
Are the stiff shifts staggered so that they're coming before or after main commuting time?
Basically.
Trying to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our, our dispatch time now, starting in the morning, is six-thirty.
Okay.
And starts at two-thirty and it starts at ten-thirty.
Okay.
So there is a little bit of relief there from traffic. But still, if you're coming from Bethel or New Fairfield or it's.
It's hard to.
It's, it's a roll of the dice that'll make you, take you two hours to get home or two and a half hours.
Those are areas where there's no direct route to begin with.
Right.
Having commuted from Bethel at one time. Do we reach into New York at all for candidates?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
I think at least one came from that way.
Because the commute is not as bad?
Yeah, Portchester or.
You know, we, we just can't lower the standards to have people there that we're not confident can do the job.
Good luck.
Chief, on a different, slightly different, can you talk to us about the injuries on the job? You had five injuries.
We did. And, you know, it's important to note that we, we logged incidents of injury on duty. That doesn't mean there's any loss of time. In the quarter, we had two COVID exposures. One was with a new officer who was COVID positive. We had an officer that was involved in training that officer, so there was, you know, the exposure time, so we, we had an exposure there. We had another officer exposed on an ambulance call where the person was known to be COVID positive. So that required a quarantine period as well. We had a slip and fall at a house on pasture lane that didn't involve any loss of time. That was just an incident reported. We had a officer jammed their thumb in a car door that also did not lose any time. It was just reported as an incident. And we did have an officer unfortunately get struck by a motor vehicle while investigating a collision on Hood Street. And I think she was out for about a week. She was knocked to the ground by a passing car while directing traffic. So those are the five. Fortunately, no lasting injuries to anyone.
On the catalytic and the car theft, can you give us an update there on what the trend is there?
Yeah, they, they, they seem to be in a lull right now. We did have one, we had a catalytic converter at the post office on April tenth, at the post office parking lot. And we did have a stolen, well, we had two stolen cars just recently. Had a work van taken from a commercial establishment on the Post Road that was recovered in the Bronx. And on Easter Sunday at one o'clock in the afternoon, we had a Range Rover taken from Hood Street between one and one-thirty. And if I was on Jeopardy, the answer would be the commonality of this is, again, is the keys and the key fob, and the, and the car was unlocked. And at six-thirty, that car was already in Elizabeth, New Jersey. I don't know what happened to it after that. I'm guessing it was probably me trying to put in a shipping container.
Yeah.
So again, the keys were in it and the car was unlocked. But we're a little bit of a lull as far as motor vehicle burglaries and stolen cars. I'd like to keep it that way. You see in the report that we have made arrests after the fact, DNA and through fingerprints for these people that are doing this. So we're never going to arrest our way out of this problem, but we do make headway on a regular basis with identifying them through investigation and, you know, cooperation with other municipalities around the state.
I'm guessing you're working with other municipalities on the converter issue also, right?
Yeah, Norwalk made an arrest. They had two gentlemen, had fourteen of them in the trunk of the car. I'm not sure if any of those were ours. It's going to be an ongoing problem as long as these precious metals are worth so much. The state legislature's trying to pass a law that's going to make it a little bit more different, difficult to get rid of them. However, there's always going to be places in the tri-state area, maybe not in Connecticut, but in New York, New Jersey, Massachusetts, where you'll be able to get rid of these with unscrupulous metal dealers. So it's, it's just so easy to do. A lot of fleet, people are making steps to, to put, to weld in covers over the catalytic converters so they can't be stolen. In the town of Trumbull, unfortunate, last week, their entire special education bus fleet went down. They couldn't transport any special education students because they got all twenty of them in a parking lot on Spring Hill Road and they got all twenty catalytic converters and one fell asleep. So it's, it's everywhere. You name the municipality, they're having it, they're having it happen.
Just real quick, how long does it take to steal a catalytic converter out of a car? Is it like a three-second job, five minutes, twenty minutes?
No, someone, someone could pull up with a battery-operating reciprocal saw, be out of the car, have the catalytic converter cut off and have it gone in ninety seconds.
Oh, wow. Yeah. So you could literally run into CVS and come back and go.
It's very quick. Yeah, you could, you could be in getting a quart of milk and your catalytic converter could be gone by the time you come out. And it's just not happening. And there was a time catalytic converter deaths happened twenty years ago where it was confined only to our commuter parking lots. They never went in a driveway or they never went in a small. Now it's, it's pretty much everywhere.
The other thing I've seen, I've seen an increase in it was in posts the other day is purse snatchings and wallet snatchings in parking lots.
Yeah, we don't, we haven't had many wallet or purse snatchings. We do have an uptick in wallets and purses being taken from unattended shopping carts. It's a little bit different then. You know, the, the quintessential purse snatch where someone grabs a purse off on his arm and takes off, thankfully that has not really happened here. But Trader Joe's, Whole Foods, yes, we're having wallets and purses taken. The good thing, there is a good thing there. A lot of times they try to use these credit cards, which gives us an avenue of investigation to track them down. We did have a, we've identified a suspect for. to track them down. We did have a, we've identified a suspect for doing this downtown, going into businesses and taking purses and wallets. He was arrested in New Canaan shortly after he left Darien, and we have warrants pending for him as well for at least two incidents in Darien. They'd also be responsible for ones in the parking lot and in the shopping centers as well. We haven't made that determination yet. Don't leave your purse or your wallet unattended, please.
Quick question. I see that the juvenile review board has started to meet again. Was that just closed because of COVID?
That was COVID. We haven't had our first JRB, but we are in conversations with the school system, and they do have some incidents that require the services of the JRB. So, we're happy to get that back up and running again. It's just resolving our issues of that type locally is just more advantageous to everyone involved. So, yeah, we'll have that fired back up in short order.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Okay. So, our Department of Public Works at Gentile is busy this morning. So, next we are going to hear from Susan Gray from Register of Voters.
Oh, and John. Sorry. Sorry, John, I didn't see you back there.
I was behind Susan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't think we have anything else to add to our report, but if you have any questions about the upcoming election or...
Yeah, I think the only thing I want to add is Susan's working on getting out postcards in reference to the redistricting because we did move some polling places and we did move some people. So, we're trying to make every attempt to make it, make the information available. I think we're still anticipating that when November rolls around, people will go to the wrong poll, but hopefully be ready for it. So...
Will the redistricting be in effect for the August 9 primary? We have to have it as well?
Yes.
So, what we did was we changed, we went through the RTM and got approval to change some of the districts. And we changed all the streets into the right, into the correct districts. And then we posted everything on our website. We put an ad in the paper and social media that showed that we had made these changes, but it was very cost-prohibitive to list every single change. So, we directed everyone to our website, and then we posted all the streets and all the... So, I think it's just districts two and six were not changed.
Yeah, and quarter three as well.
District one was changed.
Yeah, well, district one was a lot.
I said two and six were not changed, but all the other districts were. And not a great deal, but we have to notify everybody by. We're assuming we're having a primary. We just don't know yet. So, we will have an August primary most likely, and every single resident will be able to look up very easily where their new post site is, where their new district is, and who all the representatives at the moment are.
I saw that you just had that ad in the paper. Do you, are you going to do that on a repetitive basis, anything for August or for November?
Yeah, I think we're going to have to.
Right.
Yeah, especially District one. There are people that understand what happened in District one, but I think the average voter does not. And we still have some administrative concerns on how we're going to handle it because we're going to be dealing with eight ballots in the town. So, I know Krista's got her hands full too with that.
And we're going to be sending out, as John said, those postcards. So, people will have it physically in their hands before the August primary.
Okay.
That this is where you vote, this is the change.
Right.
This is your district.
Is the postcard a noticeable color?
I should have brought one.
Green.
It's blue, it's white with blue and red lettering.
It's bright.
Yes.
Okay.
It's white, blue, and red. It's got a red arrow and blue writing and white. It's right there. Important changes to your voting district. And then it says, you turn it over, there's an arrow, and it says, "You now vote here, and these are your representatives." So, we put it in two different places. We put it in the papers and social media, and then we did, we're sending postcards because it's a big change for, especially District one.
And of course, all the voters read all that information, and they're all set for August.
But we're spacing it out a little bit because we just did the, we were going to send it all at once, but we just did the paper and social media now. Then, you know, you're right, then they have to know again that they have a change. So, or be reminded, rather. So, we'll send those out.
This is excellent information for our Marley's newsletter.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
So, maybe reach out to her.
Yes, we could even give her a little copy of the postcard.
Perfect. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, both of you. Okay, we are... Let's see.
Beth Paris is not here.
Beth Paris is not here. So, Kathy Larkins, our tax collector.
Good morning. The only update I have is I've been working on reaching out to residents, residential taxpayers who owe us money. So, I'm currently at 99.5%. And I will continue to do more work with residents that owe money as well as businesses to try to finish the year strong. And that's where I am. So, I don't know if you have any questions.
Any questions, Chief?
No.
Thank you.
Well done.
We want to congratulate Kathy on being appointed to serve as the second Vice President of the Connecticut Tax Collection Association. Great job. Next, we have Krista McComara, our town clerk.
Good morning, everybody. So, finishing up my third quarter in the job, the town clerk's office continues to look for ways in which we can improve customer service for residents here in Darien and for the other people who come in requesting our services in many ways, and looking for ways we can just work smarter, more efficiently. How can we do what we've been doing, but do it a little bit better? I've highlighted a couple of things here in my report. Since then, I guess with dog licenses, June is dog licensing. It'll be a green postcard. No one else may send green postcards. Those will hold to the town clerk's office. We are working with the park and recreation department and with the police department in ways in which how can we work together in how dogs are treated with owners here in our community. We've redone the postcard, for example. We've taken out a lot of information that really was perfluous and focused on what we needed so residents can fill this form out when they're renewing their dog license. Another issue here in the community, more to report next quarter, but we are hoping to bring in credit card payments into the town clerk's office. I am so tired of hearing people say, "What? You only take cash or checks?" So, I think it's time we can enter the 20th century. The contract has gone out. So, when people come into town hall, we may take a credit card payment on site. All fees will be passed on to the customer. The town will not incur any credit card fees for this service. Of course, my next initiative is to get more of an online presence, but that will come next. So, more to report on that going forward. And that is, that's about it. Any questions on what I've sent forward?
Do you have a timeline on when you want the credit, or the credit card processing could take place?
I've sent all the paperwork off to the company. It's called Point and Pay. It was a bit of an arduous process in finding them, but as it turns out, they work with our tax department. So, we were able to piggyback off them. As soon as they come back, I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, ASAP. Or I'm buying and getting an ATM in the lobby. That's my next step. That's my backup. That's my plan B.
That's great.
I have a couple of thoughts. One is, in general, I would like to see if we can coordinate some of the timing on when these licenses or permits or park and rec permits are required so that residents can access these services at one time instead of June, May?
I totally agree. However, the state of Connecticut controls the entire process for dog licensing.
Okay.
The timing, the pricing, everything but the method of payment.
Okay.
We have no flexibility in that whatsoever.
We could work on coordinating parking, the parking passes for the beaches with public works, town permits, because we do control them. But you really can't delay the parking permits for the beaches until June because people really start accessing that in May. So, it'd be nice if we could.
I totally agree, and I wish I had more control. I do not.
But also, I think, Pam, how many, what percentage of beach permits are done online now?
Oh, gosh, 90.
Yeah. So, it's not like people are coming in here and wanting to hit all three offices at once.
We do see that quite a bit. They'll come in to register to vote or change their party. They get their dump. They come in for the dogs. We do sell dog licenses all year round. The state imposes a $1 per month penalty on that process. So, we do offer them all year round. We do about 200, 2,300 dog licenses here in Darien. And then, and of course, to touch on the RTM, which my department also liaises, we noticed that many of our new members we have who would benefit from understanding Robert's rules a little bit more, I've spoken with Seth Morton about that, and perhaps getting an online presence with Channel 79 and Jim Cameron to film some vignettes to have that archived so new members can better understand points of order and all the Robert's rules. So, when they attend RTM, they understand the moderator's role and any action he may be taking or not taking in the course of business. I've also contacted the Connecticut FOIA Commission, Freedom of Information Act Commission, Tom Hennig up there, and have invited him to come down and speak perhaps to the RTM. You can do it remotely or in person to help people understand FOIA and the compliance, and perhaps that would be benefiting other agents who's here in town.
Your team will be going back in person for May and June, yes?
I have no confirmation of that.
Okay.
I'm a proponent of it, but I have no confirmation.
I think they will be discussing that at the rules meeting on...
They will discuss it at the rules meeting on April 25th. RTM is meeting tonight. Their next rules committee meeting is...
No, they met last night.
Last night, I'm sorry. The rules meets next Monday for their May meeting. But it is up to the rules committee to decide if they go in person or not.
That was my same question.
Chris, I have a question on the birth rate and the marriage. So, I keep an eye on the birth rate, and it continues. I see we're up again 38% year over year, but I see marriages dropped 65%.
I did not contribute to either of those. Why? I do not have a thought on that. We're seeing more marriages. FYI, the state of Connecticut is more lax than we realize our neighbors in New York are as far as getting a marriage license. So, we do have people coming from the Five Boroughs to Darien to get married and then returning back to the Five Boroughs. We still can't quite understand, but I think it's because of our great customer service and our lovely staff. So, I don't know why. We're seeing more, though. We're seeing marriages tick up.
I know you weren't town clerk during COVID, but looking at the history, was there perhaps an uptick during COVID as people sought to get married for insurance reasons? So, that this might be a drop off to normal?
It could be. It could be. I mean, I can certainly pull more historical, going back five, 10 years on the marriage licenses. I know they're ticking up now.
Well, you only filed a marriage license in the town that you actually got married in, not the town that you live in.
Correct. You file it. That's what I mean. We have people come from Queens.
So, you have venues that people would get married in.
They come here, they find a justice of the peace, they go to Tilly Pond, and then they drive back.
Gotcha. We don't have a waiting period, which is one of the...
We do not have a waiting period. All they need to do is provide a driver, an identification card. That's it. They don't need to prove that they've, they're not currently married. They can just say they're divorced. It's rather...
And then they can get married.
And then they can...
Like, as soon as they get the license, there's no waiting period.
Correct. There's no waiting period. So, we do schedule the, when we get the inquiries, we schedule them so we know. And if there's any reason for concern, we do have a contact at Homeland Security whom we have called to report any concerns, suspicions. We are obligated by law to perform or to issue the license as long as both parties can understand the rules and what they're doing and what they're saying. If one person comes up not speaking English, we will not perform. We will not issue the license, I should say. As long as they both understand what they're doing, we have to issue the license, but we also then report it to Homeland Security. And this is an issue that town clerks in general in the state are aware of to... So, when that individual comes around for their green card and they go for their interviews with Homeland, there is a file.
Krista, I see the registering students creating guidelines on X.
So, in order to, this I do have experience with. In order to register your child to attend the Darien Public School System, you need to provide proof of residency. And we found out many residents were coming into town hall and looking for their deed. So, it would stop our staff. We'd have to go find the deed. They have to pay for the deed. And all the deed shows is that at some point in the history of your life that you bought that home. You may not live there anymore, but it does show you bought it at some point. So, it just was becoming silly as to why do we have Darien residents have to come into town hall, have to pay for a deed? This information is online. So, I worked with the assessor's office and found out that they, residents can go online. They go to the assessor's field card. They print out that page, and the head of human resources at the public schools was happy to accept that information. She confirmed it with town council for the Board of Ed. So, now residents can just go online, go to the assessor's field card, print that information with their other documentation, and proceed to the school and register. They do not need to come into town hall. They do not need to buy their deed.
Terrific.
So, just little things, you know, that's every, every day I try to look at the lens as to are we doing things the most efficiently way possible for our residents? And that was one that jumped out.
You are very customer service oriented.
Well, I try. I try.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks so much.
So, thank you, everyone. Does anyone else have anything they want to add that you might not have had a chance to say before? No? Okay. I want to thank everyone for coming, and that concludes our department head meeting. Thank you.
Do we have an executive session? Actually, it's not at the end, but you can move it to the end if you want.
No, I would rather.
Well, the only thing, the only thing you have besides executive session is Pam's transfer.
Yes, yes. One district, one district.
I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order for April 19th. It is 9:45. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the radiance and justice of our... Okay, first item on the agenda is the First Selectmen's Report. As on COVID, as David Knopf said, we have seen a little bit of an uptick. For the second week in a row, we're in the red category, and our positivity rate is 6.32%, up from 4.15 last week. We did have a COVID action, after-action committee of staff members, and they held, we held our first meeting. Committee will be looking back over the last two years to review all the steps that we've taken and to, as we experienced the first pandemic in our lifetime. And this review will provide us with an opportunity to create our best practices going forward. On Great Island, on behalf of the town, I continue to work to acquire the Great Island property. Analysis taking place with members of the community, town employees and representatives from various boards and commissions on aspects of owning this unique parcel of land. Grief counseling. On Friday, April eighth, the Darien Human Services Department partnered with the New Canaan Human Services Department and the Family Centers for Hope to host a Zoom discussion about processing grief, loss and supporting those around us. And as we had, as Ally mentioned in, um, our department head meeting, we have had a mental first aid interactive course designed to give members of the public key skills in helping someone who is developing a mental health problem or experiencing a mental health crisis. It's similar to CPR, CPR training that helps non-prof, non-medical professionals assist an individual following a near heart attack. This mental health first aid training helps an individual without clinical training assist someone experiencing a mental health crisis. The first training session filled up quickly. Um, we do have, um, these are eight hour sessions. Uh, Saturday, Sunday, I'm sorry, June fifth, from eight thirty to five PM, we will have a session. And Wednesday, June sixth and Thursday, June ninth, eight thirty to one on both days. Um, to sign up, please, um, contact my office. Mediation between Eversource and the town of Darien continues. Our last meeting was held on March thirtieth. At this time, the mediator is working with both, um, sides and processing the information that he's received. And we are waiting on our next meeting, uh, schedule. In the meantime, on days like today where we are dealing with down trees across power lines and outages, um, around town, including taking out, um, power for our schools, it's important that we remember reliable and responsive teamwork between Eversource and the town is crucial. Right now, we do have, um, crews working, um, with the Department of Public Works and the Police Department to restore power and to make sure our roads are safe. Uh, tomorrow I have a meeting scheduled with Darien United. This is a program run through the, the YWCA. I am looking forward to working with this group and including its concepts in our community value statement. We do have a new police officer, Constance, Konstantin Boukas. Officer Busakis, I'm sorry, was sworn, sworn in last Thursday and we wish him well. Sarah Newman and I were happy to be able to attend the swearing in ceremony. Later today, I will be meeting with West Cog to continue to work on the Metro North Railroad New Canaan Branch Noise Abatement Feasibility Study. And I will be reporting back when I have an update there. And, um, it's nice to see that the rain has stopped. Other bright spots in town. If you haven't seen the flower installation over on Grove Street, um, I recommend a visit. It's, um, it's a beautiful surprise by the fountain and a lot of people took advantage over the weekend to take photos. Um, if you haven't, I hope you get a chance to go visit it and shop local while you're there. Um, that's all I have for my report. Kate?
Um, next week we have the first round of interviews for, um, new HR director. We have four strong candidates. Um, so panel of department heads will be interviewing them. And then our hope is to present, um, probably two, maybe three, two new as the board in May, um, for your interviews. Um, so we'll be coordinating that with all of you. We might need to do it virtually, but, um, get that done. Hopefully have somebody on before the end of the fiscal year. Um, you know, something the chief alluded to, we are having difficulty filling vacancies, particularly part-time vacancies. There just, um, aren't people who want the, the part-time work. But, um, in some instances, we don't have the need for full-time or we can't afford to go full-time with some of the positions. So that's an ongoing issue. And then I am working on some RFPs for some of the projects funded by ARPA. Uh, I met with, uh, a couple of representatives from the RTM last week to go over what we'd like to see done in the auditorium to improve the audio and visual there, um, both for RTM meetings and for other presentations. Um, looking at an RFP for the town website up through May. So getting that done so we can get them out and get the projects moving. And we're also lining up second level projects, um, just in case there are funds left over from some of the other ones that we can bring back forward so that we use the money as fully as possible.
Thanks, Kate. Uh, board liaison reports. Sarah, do you have anything for thriving?
Um, I do, not for thriving, but for the, um, Henley Homes and Royal Building Project. Um, RFPs for the project architects were due ten days ago. This week, the committee will be interviewing four firms and then deciding on the finalists this week to produce a charrette for the final selection process. Next, we're going to be receiving RFQs for construction managers and which are due this Thursday. And last night, the RTM approved initial funding appropriations for the three school projects.
Yep. Um, Ox Ridge Building Committee met on the fourteenth. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. I was not in town, but thanks to Channel Seventy-Nine, I was able to review it last night, um, get all the information I needed. They are currently at eighty-four percent completion of the academic wing, which is great. Um, they're installing cabinets at this point. They're painting. Most of the sheet rock is up. Sinks and fixtures are going in, so that's exciting. Um, there are some supply chain issues that they've hit, which we've kind of assumed might be an issue, um, in particularly in materials such as metal and some paint materials, which has put back the, um, uh, the date in which they can get into the building from May fifteenth to June first, which is not huge, but, you know, we are starting to see some of those supply chain issues. Um, state approved grant came in for the AV equipment, which took a very long time. It took almost three months in order to get that, uh, but it's going. So we had to quickly put in a, um, a purchase order and a bid to get those out and had to check the lead times on that, which again is another sort of issue with supply chain. And hopefully those get in and we're able to install them in the summer so that the kids can get in for September. Overall, the project is going really well. Um, the landscaping in the courtyard is near completion, which is beautiful. I was able to kind of sneak back there the other day. Um, and the current projected cost is five million, fifty million, two hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars, which is still under budget from what the original was. And during the COVID year with huge supply chain issues, I think they're doing a really, really good job. So.
Great report. Thank you. Um, public comment? Do we have anybody that wishes to speak? Dan?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me. I'm Dan Guller, Ten Walmsley Road. And, uh, I represent a committee in charge of this year's Darien LGBTQ Pride Celebration. Uh, last year, for the first time, uh, in Darien, at any rate, uh, the First Selectman's Office approved a pride flag to be flown at Town Hall as well as one being flown at one of our town beaches. Uh, further efforts by local volunteers resulted in a townwide observance with almost sixty local businesses and churches flying pride flags and at least two hundred private residences hosting pride flags and yard signs. So today, our committee hopes to continue that momentum from last year. And we're very pleased to announce that we'll be holding Darien's first ever LGBTQ Pride Rally in Tilly Pond Park on June twelfth. Uh, that's a Sunday from noon to four. We're going to have music, speakers, live entertainment, food, games and more. We've had great help from our current partners, Baywater Properties, the Y and the Depot. Uh, I'd like to personally invite all of you to attend and join us. And I would like to ask you, Monica, if you would like to welcome everybody and be our first speaker of the day, welcoming everyone to the event. And afterwards, if you'd like, you could get your face painted. And, uh, I'd also like to request that much like last year, the pride flag be flown here at Town Hall as well as the Public Works Building and at both beaches for the month of June in honor of LGBTQ Pride Month. Uh, Darien Pride will gladly pay for and provide the flags. A few months ago, three brave high school students testified to the Board of Ed as to the harassment that they both witnessed and experienced towards queer students at DHS. I feel like this moment is our opportunity to show them that the grownups have their backs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any other public comment? Looking at you, Patty.
Just coming to support the fifteen thousand dollar appropriation, which I know will likely occur after this session.
Okay.
No, nothing through mail.
No emails? Okay. All right. So, thank you. Um, may I have a motion to go into executive session?
Right.
It's only us.
Look around.
Sarah moves, Marcy seconds. Okay, thank you.
We're looking for Mike to.
May I have a motion to return to open, open session? Sarah moves, Marcy seconds. All in favor? Terrific. Um, next up on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request to transfer fifteen thousand dollars to Parks and Rec Facility Maintenance. Pam Carey, would you like to explain?
I'm just here to, um, request a special appropriation. I believe that's what.
Yes.
Right. Uh, for, um, the painting of the bathhouse at the beach and the paddle hut. Um, it takes, you know, a lot of hard weather down there. Um, and it's in bad shape. The peaks, um, of the actual bathhouse are really just faded. I sent pictures to everybody. Uh, paddle hut all around is faded. Um, I did talk to our crew. In order to keep the price to fifteen thousand, our crew will be doing the bathhouse from, you know, reachable down to, and no peaks involved because they don't have the equipment for that. And that, that was allowing us to keep it at fifteen thousand dollars. It would have been a lot more had we not had their support. And we really, our commission is really, um, all about the standard of care right now of our facilities. I know Lori came before you as well. And, um, we would really like the buildings to be beautiful before summer.
Right. I support that idea. Is there any other painting that needs to be done over there now? Is this?
No. We beach, both, those are both facilities. That's the only two facilities we have there.
That need paint. Okay.
And last year we did Pear Tree inside and that all got done. All the bathroom, both bathrooms concession, first aid, that all got painted inside. The outside, I, I know there's been some people that are inquired about it, but we did have our crew paint that maybe five years ago, six years ago now. But, you know, it's cement. It handles better than weed beach, which is the panels, the shingles.
So when's the next time this would need to be redone?
I would say that it will have to be another six years because I came here in Darien in two thousand and fifteen. We had both of those buildings painted in two thousand and sixteen and they, this is what they look like now. So it'll be in our six-year plan.
Six year. Okay.
Again, weather depending, right? But I, I think that's a pretty good, healthy number, five to six years out.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
No, I don't have the pictures, but I.
I couldn't attach the pictures to the packet.
You would, you'd be really surprised.
No, I'd say you show the. Just curious.
And Pam, when are you thinking about starting this?
I, once I know that this gets approved, I'm going to have to go out to bid. So I'm going to try to put that RFP together with Kate and then get that out. And hopefully, you know, there'll be like a four-week turnaround. And that means that hopefully a contractor will get in there before the end of June.
Okay. So sometime in June?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully they can get the paint.
Yeah.
Right. Well, there is that. Um, any other questions?
Yep.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the transfer of fifteen thousand dollars to the Parks and Rec Facility Maintenance? Sarah moves, Marcy seconds. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Okay. Next item, item up on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes of the April fourth, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting. Are there any edits, deletions, changes? No? Okay. Um, may I have a motion to approve as presented? Marcy moves, Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Agenda review. Are there any topics board members would like to see on future agendas? Okay. Um, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Marcy moves, Sarah seconds. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you.